Councilor Coontz, and second by Councilor Davis. All those in favor? Opposed and carries? Need a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular evening council meeting of February the 11th and the public hearing meeting of February the 11th. Have a motion please. Councilor Ferguson and a second or? Councilor Davis? Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed and carried. And move on to presentations, and I'd like to welcome the Langley Fundamental Schools Titans Senior Boys Soccer Team, who won the 2018 B.C. Senior Boys Double A Provincial Soccer Championships late last year, and brought home the banner for the second year in the role. Congratulations. That's a great accomplishment for all these great young soccer players, and I know that a lot of hard work, a lot of commitment, and by all the players and the coaches, and I'm sure the parents too, and taking them to and from the games and practices were involved. And you've set a great example for all of our young athletes in the Township of Langley, so I want to congratulate you on your win.
(applause)
And yes, and you picked a great night to be here because you have a whole bunch of other young sports enthusiasts to witness this. So I have some certificates for you, I'll now present, and then we'll have a picture up here. Okay?
(inaudible)
So now we'll move on to delegations, and the first delegation is the Fort Langley Community Association, Mr. Andy Shildhorn. If you want, please come forward. And just for all the delegation's information, I know there's five tonight, you're limited to five minutes, and I will be, because we have a long agenda, ruthless on the time. So you'll see, the light will flash red, and then it'll go solid red, and you know that your time is up on the solid red, so that should help you on those little lights there. So welcome here.
Thank you.
And you're not Andy, and all that.
No.
So if you don't mind just giving us your name and where you're from, and then...
Thank you.
We'll wait till you get started. So there's, I have two delegations, Karen Zoukas and Andy, so you're both tag teaming?
That's right.
Okay, so just reversing it, okay.
Perfect.
No problem.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Karen Zoukas, and I live at 9352 Singh Street in Fort Langley. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present highlights from the Third Annual Survey of the Fort Langley Community Association. A bit about the survey itself, it was hand-delivered and mailed to every household in the village in the spring of 2018, and it was also mailed to all rural residents. Half of the respondents completed the survey online, and half completed a paper survey. The survey response rate was about 12%, which is based on an estimated population of 6,500 adult residents in the village. And in looking at the survey participation, which has changed over the years, we've seen a significant increase in the total number of responses we started, since we started the survey in 2016. Most recently, we saw a 50% increase over 2017 to 2018, which we're very pleased with. We've also seen the participation by residents and businesses to remain pretty steadily, pretty much the same, over the last number of years. And we've also seen that the majority of participants in the survey remains the same, and that's residents with 21-plus years in the Fort Langley area, or one to five years in Fort Langley. We asked respondents to provide their street address, and this gave us this data and this information, so we know of the 535 survey respondents, we know that 346 live in the village of Fort Langley, 111 live in Bedford-Landing, and 74 on acreages. And this is what we would expect to see, and is representative of the number of households in the area, with approximately 850 houses in Fort Langley, and 220 houses in Bedford-Langley. So what, when we asked the question, "What do you most like about Fort Langley?", and this was really interesting, because we saw the most important feature that residents like about Fort Langley is that you can walk and cycle everywhere. You can walk to the community, to the village, around the village, and on trails, and that was the number-one thing that residents told us that they love about Fort Langley. Then we also heard the heritage character was really important, as well as a sense of community, accessibility to river sports, and the variety of food and cultural venues that were also important, very important to residents. We also asked residents, we were offered an option to share any other things that they really liked about Fort Langley, and we can see that community is the number-one thing that comes up in this, in this word map, and we can see that heritage and character, again, are the most appealing aspects of Fort Langley to residents, along with small, friendly, unique, and a quiet town. We're also beginning to see in this word map, a few issues that are emerging as well, things like trees, large developments, traffic, and density are coming up. So even though this was a question about most liked aspects, people were still offering their comments about aspects about Fort Langley. So we're beginning to see a few issues emerging here. We also saw that residents are participating in all of our festivals, community festivals, and events that are available in our own backyard, and many of these events are supported by the Township of Langley, including the First Annual Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival, which we are very grateful for, and will be coming up on July 26th and 28th, just a little plug there. I hope you all can attend. And we also saw that the Cranberry Festival and the Farmer's Market continue to be very popular, as is Remembrance Day and May Day and Canada Day ceremonies. When we asked, "What is the one word that best describes Fort Langley to you?", again, community is, comes up. Community, home, unique, quaint, heritage, these are key words that people come to mind when we ask residents how they feel about our community, and what they, when they think of their community, what they, what words come to mind. We're also seeing words like historic, heritage, walkable, and quaint to describe Fort Langley. So based on this survey feedback, we could say, or we could describe Fort Langley as a historic, walkable, unique, and quaint community that is small, friendly, vibrant, pretty, and a safe place that feels like home. I'm now going to pass the presentation to Andy Shildhorn, who's going to talk about some of the issues that we have identified in the survey. Thank you.
My name is Andy Shildhorn. I live at 22895 Sales Avenue, and I'm here to continue the presentation. So our next slide is, what important issues are most, what Fort Langley issues are most important to you? And every year, we try to identify top issues in Fort Langley. You can see here that heritage, character is number one, truck traffic is number two, the truck route. But if you look at number four, excessive traffic speed, number five, controlled intersections, number seven, parking, these are all adding up to one thing, and that's vehicle traffic in the village. And we are an island, we have two or three avenues of access into Fort Langley. It's very difficult to walk from other communities into Fort Langley, it's difficult to ride your bike. We're not part of any kind of main thoroughfare, there's no transit that's really dependable that goes into Fort Langley, so people have to drive their cars. And as the village core, the commercial core is being developed, and we are starting to see more and more stores that are looking for outside commercial support, that we're starting to see more traffic, and it's starting to impact what we're seeing in Fort Langley. The other part of it that we are seeing is tree protection, and tree protection is kind of interesting, because in the other, the last one there, that was a one-line item that people could add a couple of words, and in that one, we see the word development. And it was a little surprising for us to see it so prominent. We had to go back and look at the wording that actually came in, and it was a composite of residential and commercial development. And on the residential side, it's the, we understand it to be the 5,000, 6,000 square-foot homes, the new builds that are being built in Fort Langley. And when you have a new build, you have to cut down, or they have to cut down, all the trees. So the person that lives next door, he comes home one day, you know, he knows that there's going to be a house built next door, he comes and looks in his backyard, all the trees are gone, next door, and his backyard, which used to be private, green, lush, is now very open. And so I think that's where the idea of a tree bylaw is coming in, is that people want to kind of conserve some of those trees. I mean, there's the environmental factor, but that's what I think we're seeing in Fort Langley, is a composite of the tree bylaw and residential development. How important is the following for commercial developments in Fort Langley? And these are main issues that haven't changed over the years, we're still seeing the same things. Design and character of buildings, that's how it looks, what's the feel of the building? Height and lot coverage of the building, again, it's the look and feel, but also how it affects the infrastructure. What should we do next with that? Should we be reinforcing our existing guidelines? Should we be looking at the OCP? There are many answers to that, and they're not going to be answered today. On our next slide, we have, do you have any other comments? And that was a two-to-three line at the end of the survey, where people could actually write in what they thought. And we did get a lot of different ideas, but the predominant one was development again, traffic, speed, trucks, and if you look at parking, you can put the two together, heritage and designation. And really what it is asking is, how do you manage growth and maintain heritage? For me, Fort Langley heritage is not just a specific building, it's a cultural identity of community. And interesting, these comments, they're, they're not asking for infrastructure, they're not asking for a pool, they're not asking for major things to come into the village, they're asking for the status quo, the status quo to remain the same. They're looking for stability in the village, and they're looking for, to keep the quaintness of the village. So one of the questions we had was, what activities would you like Fort Langley's Community Association to undertake? Again, they reinforces the key issues identified here, we've got fixing the truck traffic issues, and resolving development issues, and protecting heritage. There are also two more sidewalks, and I think that's referring back to about two years ago, Township did the sidewalks from 96th Avenue, and we'd like to see that continue. I do have some notable quotes, which I can go into, but I see I'm running out of time, so I'm going to pass on that, you guys can read the quotes. But the key giveaways are that, "The largest group of respondents have lived in Fort Langley for 21 years. The walkability of the village, the heritage, character, and sense of community were among the most important features. Respondents are most concerned with the heritage, character, vehicle traffic, and most commercial and residential development, and that traffic, parking, development, and heritage were key issues respondents, which the FLCA should address." And what's our next step? We're going to hold a community information session Thursday, March 14, 7:00 p.m. at the community hall, to discuss survey results and key issues identified in the survey, and there, from there, we're going to work on our strategic plan. In closing, I just want to say thank you to the Fort Langley Community Improvement Society for their financial support, without their support, we would not have been able to do this. Lee's Market, Wendell's, Sweetgrass, Beatniks, Magidascapa for allowing us to drop off surveys at their locations, and all of the volunteers who helped deliver the survey to each household in Fort Langley. And of course, a very special thank you to all the fellow Fort Langley residents that took the time to fill out the survey.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm available for any questions on FLCA or our survey.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of the survey for us?
Yes.
For staff?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, thanks. So I don't have any questions, so thank you very much.
Okay.
I appreciate that, it's a lot of information.
Thank you.
Okay, the next delegation is Jessica Yenam.
So, good evening, your worshiping councilors. My name is Jessica, I live in Walnut Grove. So my, I was going to really expand on this today, but I'm going to revise it and do another presentation next council meeting. So basically, the reason why I'm here is, I've noticed that the Township of Langley is defining how large a family can be in rec centers. And I question, who gave the Township of Langley the right to define how large a family can be? Because there are families that can be larger than, larger than three children per family. And there are families that have more than three parents per family. So that's why I'm here, and I'm just curious why the Township of Langley had decided to put a restriction in on how large a family can be.
Thank you, so you just wanted...
So...
So, I know this has been discussed, and I have asked for some clarification, I can tell you one real simple answer, is that when it was unlimited, we had a lot of abuse, we had people coming in, and every nephew, niece, neighborhood friend was now part of the family, so, so staff really had to struggle with that, and how do we make it fair to families? And that was one of the reasons, is because of the abuse that was happening. But maybe, you know, we could get back to you with a little bit more of a fuller explanation, I could have staff put something together for you, and certainly we'll do that.
Yeah, because what I find, is I don't find it fair to a lot of families, you know, like, a lot of people that are not abusing this, are not abusing this, obviously, and you know, there's people out there that have six, six children per family. There's people that have, like, one of my friends has three parents, for example, they have a stepdad, a stepmom, and a biological mom.
That's great, we'll pass it on to staff, and certainly, we thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
No, that's, that's great.
Thanks, guys.
And just so you know, there are programs for those who have challenges with income, where there are programs that they can come to any of our rec centers and ask, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next delegation is D4, the Langley Minor Lacrosse Association. There's a lot of them here, so who's all, are they all coming down? And can you just identify yourself?
Yeah, my name is Darren Buckin, I live in Alder Grove. I'm the Vice President of Langley Minor Lacrosse. And we're here this evening to talk about the lack of dry floor space for multiple sports, but mainly for lacrosse this year. With the maintaining of the ice in the George Preston Rec Center through till the end of May, it is putting a substantial hardship on Langley Minor's lacrosse ability to grow. Over the last five years, Langley Minor Lacrosse has grown 35%, and we are at a point this year where we are having to cap any registration, put families on waiting lists because of the dry floor loss at George Preston Rec Center this, this year. Just numbers-wise, as far as George Preston goes, because of that closure, we've lost 25 hours of practice time and two game slots. So there's no way that we can maintain the numbers that we had even last year, when our numbers were 417 families enrolled in lacrosse. We are at, this year, 390, and cannot go any further. So although our registration is growing, although the interest in the sport is growing, we cannot grow any further, and we are actually telling families, we're going to have to tell some families in our association that because of the lack of floor time, that we are not going to be able to let their kids play lacrosse this year. And that is strictly based on the fact that the times that were historically available to us at the George Preston Rec Center are no longer available due to the decision to keep the ice in for all of April and all of May this year. With the season starting in April and ending in the middle of June, we cannot submit schedules to our governing body and be able to have enough times for our kids to actually play those games. So that is the gist of where we're at. We don't know, we don't know why it happened, we don't understand it, we weren't told ahead of time that this was happening before we released our registration, so we have been playing catch-up for quite some time. And the only way that we were ever informed that it was happening was on the Riverman website, saying that they were running camps throughout April and May. It's not on the Riverman, but that's how we actually found out that this was happening, that there was no dry floor in George Preston Rec Center for all of April and all of May. So I guess for, for Langley Minor Lacrosse, the reason we're here is to ask, how are, ask you, how are we supposed to go to our families that are 98% residents of the Township and City of Langley, and say, "We're sorry, you can't play lacrosse this year because there's ice"? In a historical building where it's always been a dry floor in the spring, when hockey is over, it turns to a dry floor, so multiple different sports in the spring can participate in their sports in an arena that is sanctioned for those sports to be played in. We appreciate the George Preston outdoor box, we think it is an excellent facility for practices, but we cannot submit that as a suitable opportunity for us to play sanctioned lacrosse games at the higher levels, at the midget, bantam, and even the pee-wee levels, because it is not, it doesn't fall into the code that is based upon the CLA regulations for us to play games in that environment. So our biggest issue is, how do we go back to Township residents and Township families, and say, "Not only can we continue to grow our sport, but we actually have to shrink our sport this year. We have to cap our registration at numbers that are less than last year, and last year we grew by 27%. And now we are telling them we can't do that anymore."
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of questions. So I'm glad you mentioned the new lacrosse box, and I don't understand why that's not acceptable for games. It's covered, it's walled, it's...
It is, but in the Canadian Lacrosse Association rulebook, penalty boxes have to be on the opposite side of where the players' benches are, and they are not, there are, we have players' bench, penalty box, penalty box, players' bench, and there's no partitions between them, and it's not sanctioned, we, it's not a, it's not a suitable facility. The floor is fantastic, and I know there's upgrades being done to the facility, but within the rules of the game, the actual build of that facility will not facilitate sanctioned lacrosse games.
Good to know. And you mentioned that 98% of your players are from Township of Langley and City of Langley. How much floor space does the City of Langley give you?
The City of Langley provides us with...
And game, and game space for playing games.
There is no game space in the City of Langley.
Okay, so you are also going to be visiting the city?
Absolutely.
Council meeting, and we would appreciate that?
Yes.
Because we do provide a lot of sports facilities in the Township.
They have plans for covered blocks, but they don't have plans for indoor blocks.
Yeah, that would be great, because, yeah, we do provide a lot of sports facilities.
It's already by April either.
Yeah, yeah, and I understand you did meet with our staff, or at least your organization met with our staff, and hopefully a lot of questions were answered, and I know there's been lots of, you know, things going around, but we're doing our best, and...
There is, there is lots of dialogue, and there's been lots of, we've had great communication with some of the staff and everything like that, but we still don't have an answer for our families. We don't have an answer for our families as to why a decision was made to take dry floor away, that has historically been there every single year.
I understand, and as you can understand, you saw a great soccer team here that play for the school, but there's a lot of different competing sports that, not competing, but sports that use our floors, and we're trying to do our best, but we appreciate your comments, and your, and our staff are working on it. I do have some questions from council, Council Ferguson, and then Woodward.
Thank you very much for coming, that was a great presentation, and as you know, we are working with floor space, not just you, and for ball hockey as well, so, you know, I know we're doing everything we can to accommodate such a successful thing that you guys are doing, and I'm a retired teacher, but I wanted to say to all your players here, please take some notes tonight, because there's going to be a test tomorrow. It was great to see young people in the chambers. I did want to say, if, when you're sitting down with the staff, do you look at all the facilities we have, whether it's inside schools, whether it's in some of our old beat-up boxes and things like that, for practice and things like that, anything you can get...
We use all of them.
...some space to work on, so I know you're working, go ahead, she wants to answer, go ahead.
Yeah, I can address that. As far as schools goes, we're not allowed to take our balls inside and use them, we have to use wiffle balls or Nerf balls, which are not conducive to lacrosse practice.
Okay.
So schools are out, gyms are out. Some gyms won't even allow our lacrosse sticks in there. We do make use of the other boxes, such as MAP box, we're definitely using that, the LEC, we have managed to get some time in there. But once again, LEC is a game space, MAP is a practice facility. As far as game space goes, there's Alder Grove, there was George Preston Arena, and there was the LEC.
Anyway, I really appreciate you coming, we're going to keep working on this thing, say hello to all our friends, all the community, and nothing succeeds like success. Thank you.
Thanks. Council Woodward?
Yeah, I want to thank you for bringing it to the Recreation and Parks Committee the other night, and so I think I've heard some of that for the second time, so I've had some time to think about that, and I come up with a couple of questions. I, you know, I'm still trying to get up to speed on some of the user groups and some of the specific requirements, and maybe looking at some of the facilities to accommodate multiple user groups, you know, in terms of both of their sets of requirements is actually quite challenging. And I wanted to understand, while you're here, the outdoor box, in terms of it being covered, and some of those issues around penalty boxes makes sense, but is there, is there a firm reason why an outdoor box, just for my own education, can't be used for games?
For the same reason that an outdoor box can't be used for a hockey game in the winter. It's not a sanctioned facility to play a game.
So the one at McLeod, for example, you wouldn't play a game there just for my own, just only for practicing?
There's not appropriate.
The floor is...
There's no clock.
There's a safety issue on, and the, on the floor itself. You've got debris, you've got families, you know, now, traditionally indoor sport, now outside, and not feeling displaced, shall we say.
Okay, and so...
And the physical nature of MAP is the issues around change rooms, referee rooms, spectator rooms, washrooms...
Washrooms, clocks, shot clocks.
Shot clocks, there's all kinds of infrastructure... There's all kinds of infrastructure around that, and...
Well, even upgrades to McLeod don't necessarily solve the problem.
Upgrades to McLeod would not solve the problem, no.
That's good, it's good to get that clear. The, the next thing though, too, is in regards to solving the issue for this year, I know we're, we're making some progress, but I wanted to get it very clear what you still need for this year in order to get you past this season.
Wendy?
We need two game slots, and we need 25 hours for practice time.
Okay, so that's great, so, because I think...
But that only maintains the set.
That's the maintain.
Yes, so I was going to get to that in a second.
We would have to completely shut.
So I think that that's, that's good to get that, to get that really clear, just to get through the issue this season. And then I think that there's some discussions that I'd like to start having around how you can grow the sport, because I know for me, when I grew up, my family could not afford to put me through hockey programs. So to me, dry floor sports are really, really important. And I want to see if there's a way to, to, to expand the capacity so you can grow the sport, along, along with the, the other user group that's, that's had this issue.
I think, I think all sports are important, both winter sports and spring sports, and we would agree with that. And winter sports are played during the winter and spring sports, but when the winter sports go all the way through into almost summer, it's going to have an effect on spring sports. And I think that's the biggest issue that we face, is a decision was made to keep ice in a building with its always historically been dry floor for those three months that can be played, and a decision was made to not have dry floor space. That was a conscious decision made by somebody to take away dry floor space and keep ice.
I think going forward, though, I think it's great to have it itemized specifically what you're looking for to get through this season, and then do, you know, get better next season, of course, in regards to the LEC, but also look at some other ways to try to grow the capacity within the community, which was going to lead to my last question, which is, do you have a general percentage of your families and children, and kids that play this sport that you want to grow, generally live in the city versus the township?
Township versus city, I do have percentages.
Roughly, just my own information.
Yeah, like last year, we were 88% township and 10% city of Langley.
Okay.
2% other.
2% other, so that's good to get that clarified, to me, because we have those numbers, because I think there was some, some idea that maybe the city portion was a little bit larger. So that, that would be more around 1090, somewhere around in there?
Yeah.
For give or sake, okay? So I would echo that, some of the frustration that, you know, that the township, of course, with the larger population and the larger budget, you know, is seen to supply these issues. And of course, it's being generated from George Preston, but I would hope that, that maybe, even if the city contributed 10% to some of these facilities, that would be really helpful.
Absolutely, we would agree.
And hopefully, hopefully some pressure can be brought together, brought to bear against the city as a community, because we struggle to, to find the money to build these facilities and feel we do subsidize the city to some degree. So thank you.
Thanks. Council Long?
Thanks, thanks for your presentation. I'm, I'm not that familiar with the sport. So can you explain again about this penalty box? Because I, I understand you've explained already how MAP isn't going to work, and maybe for practices, but the, the George Preston box, can it not be modified some way before the season? Because I know staff are doing a lot of renovations, time clock, the seating, glass, and so forth, but can the penalty box thing be fixed there?
So we were, we were requested after we spoke in front of the Parks Board to clarify that a little bit of, around what were the specific things that would make the George Preston outdoor box incapable of playing games? And the largest one is, the penalty boxes have to be on the opposite side of player benches. So you have the home team and the visiting team over here, and the penalty box is on the other side, whereas it was...
With the timekeeper.
With the timekeeper, yes. So there has to be, the timekeeper and the score sheet person have to be on the opposite side.
Penalty box.
Of the, on the same side of the penalty box, on the opposite side of the players' bench.
As per every arena that we have here.
Everywhere.
You know.
We requested the plans for the renovations. There's concerns as well with dividers as it is. Will there be glass dividers between the penalty box and the players' bench, and even the officials' bench? There is currently just a screen in front. I, I don't know anyone who would sit up there as a parent, as a timekeeper and a scorekeeper, where balls can come in from all these kind of angles. So we are hoping to see these plans. And we do need to submit all of this to our governing body and our insurance providers as well, to get their approval.
And if this had been done perhaps next year, when this was all said and done, and we weren't, you know, hoping beyond hope that this is all going to be done by April 6th of our season, and we have to have our declarations to the BCLA, at our own commission by March 10th, to state where every team is playing and what we kind of doing, so you can appreciate when we find out January 31st, at an allocation meeting, this is happening, what, what it does to our association.
Okay, I'm still wondering if, if by March 10th, we couldn't find some solution with the penalty box, but maybe...
It would probably require like complete reconstruction. You would have to take the penalty boxes out, you'd have to put them on the other side. I mean, it's a pretty significant change to the boards.
Send them out.
Okay, well, anyway, thanks for your presentation. Hopefully we can work something out.
So, that's great, and I have a question. The new Alder Grove Credit Union Community Center, is that available at some point?
Yes, we do have some time there, yes.
Yeah, and the old...
We have the right 15 hours.
I remember watching my grandson play lacrosse in there, but those, apparently the penalty box is the same size, side as the players' bench.
That was a grandfather. Yeah, we were grandfathered in.
Oh, was your grandfathered in?
On BCLA.
Okay.
It is the same way when we had the fieldhouse added to the LEC, where we, we had to get special permission because the lines weren't there at this point in time. But this is a safety issue, and they're not, they would like to inspect it before they even begin to give us...
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, that's helpful to know.
And so again, the time crunch on this one is what we're really concerned about. If this was done next year, where we could have some time to look at it and get the BCLA in to inspect it, and all that was happening, and we knew that the floor wasn't going to be, you know, that it has to be resurfaced, repainted, condensation in it is an issue, the leaves, the debris, the vandalism that happens to it, makes it again, not an appropriate venue for our kids.
Good, well, thank you very much for bringing that to attention. And I know we've been, we're well aware of it, and our staff are well aware of it, and they've been working with you to, and the other user groups to come to some solutions, and we're all challenged with this, so, but I appreciate you coming out. Thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
I've got Council Davis, sorry.
Just, just a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Long looked up the rules, and it says here, the box shall provide a separate penalty bench for each team situated on the opposite side of the timekeeper. The penalty benches shall be, be capable of accommodating 10 persons. What kind of a sport is this?
That's including the officials. And that's also hockey.
I'm, I'm, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
But it is.
It's rule three of the...
And you know what, maybe we've had a few.
Tougher sport.
It's a tough sport, I used to play it.
Look at our kids, they're tough kids.
All right, thank you very much for, for presenting to us.
Thank you.
And next delegation is Mr. Chris Sanders.
Chris Sanders, 4477 Benz. I'd like to thank the mayor and council for this opportunity to talk tonight, and also thank you for those that are aware and have invested considerable time and efforts into researching these concerns. These concerns are that the raised grade elevations, this is on a lintera development behind our property, allow for higher and larger buildings not fitting into the existing community. The raised grade elevations, without proper drainage systems, put existing neighbors' homes in jeopardy with surface water runoff. Since last June, staff have only been able to tell me that the engineer of record is the one who certifies that the lot grading elevations are in substantial compliance with the grading plan submitted. It's very hard to contact the engineer of record after four days of continuous attempts. 10:30 AM, August 23rd, the engineer of record says, "The ground was uneven, so we had to bring in fill to make it level." There was a duck pond, we thought they were going to fill in the duck pond, but they raised it by a meter and a half. The whole property, not just the uneven parts. If you have a problem, talk to Dave Lind. The rough grading is complete to the grading plan and is okay per Dave Lind, and that was August the 23rd last year. Later that day, TOL staff said to me, "Lot four will probably be a rancher on a crawl space." I took a picture of it yesterday, it's not a rancher on a crawl space, it's higher than everything else on the property. Question is, what steps must be taken to bring this to a rightful conclusion, ensuring that the lot grading plan is followed as submitted would be a good start? The one catch basin that they put in on the east side swale is 10.3 centimeters higher than it's supposed to be, and in 177 centimeter length of ground, that's a 5% uphill grade for the water to go. And minimum swale elevations are supposed to be 1% grade, the opposite direction to flow water. It's 5% the opposite direction. Thus, water sitting in that east side swale has nowhere else to go but through the ground, through the wooden fence that they've stacked dirt up against, and neither the fence nor the dirt will hold water. Any questions?
Thank you, and appreciate your correspondence. I know staff have been working a lot on it, I know the project isn't complete yet, so there will be, we're certainly aware of it, and I know you and I spoke, and...
Yes, we did, thank you.
And all staff are, are on it, hopefully.
But when it's complete, when there's a...
That's right, when it's complete, there better not be any water in your backyard.
When it's complete, it'll be too late to do anything about it, that's the problem.
Yeah. Counsel Arneson has a question.
Yes, I just want to thank you very much for coming, and I know you've reached out to council members as well as staff, and we've had your email with lots of photos to express your concern about the situation. I'm optimistic that the, the problems will be resolved based on that, but I do understand it's a bit of a challenge with infill, just because the nature of the, the building of the homes, et cetera, and then the existing properties. So it, I, I do thank you for your due diligence, I know you've done a lot of work about this, and so I sincerely hope that we'll be able to, you know, resolve the problem as the construction continues on the infill lots there.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Okay, so now we move on to bylaws for first and second reading, and F1 is rezoning application number 100535 and development permit application number 101014, bylaw number 5447, New Yorkson Medical Limited, 7900 block of 206th Street. Could I have a motion, please?
Yep.
Counsel Arneson moves, Counsel Davis seconds. Discussion on F1. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Looking at the staff report, I, I was quite excited about the look of, of the building. It is a professional building, I know it is a request for variance as to what was originally intended on the site, but given the development in the area, I think it's quite apropos. I did have a question, I know there's underground parking, but through your worship to staff, can, can you please advise if there is going to be on-street parking on 206 on both sides?
Mary Richardson?
Through your worship to Counsel Arneson, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, just one clarification. So I know in the town center per se, it's kind of diagonal angled parking. Would this be the same, or do you anticipate that it would be more linear, just going along the curb?
At this preliminary, three worship to Counsel Arneson, at this preliminary stage, I believe the design is a parallel arrangement.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F1. Carries unanimously. Move on to F2, official community plan amendment and rezoning application. You do, okay. Let's wait for Counsel Ferguson to exit. All right, F2 is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100115 and development permit application number 100768, BD Development Group at 26550 Gloucester Way, bylaw 5444 and bylaw 5445. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis moves, seconder. Counsel Kuntz, discussion on F2. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, is this, is a rezoning? Are they going to be putting any kind of an integrated stormwater management plan in place?
Mr. Richardson or Mr. Backen, I don't know who best to answer this question. Mr. Richardson?
Through your worship to Counsel Richter, the proposals are for a Gloucester Community Plan Amendment and a rezoning, and as such, the application is subject to the township's subdivision development servicing bylaw, which requires a stormwater management plan for the site.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. That's an interesting proposition. I had a, a different thought about that, but I, I really think that since this application is going forward and the area is evolving, that that's something, I know it's on our agenda and our work plans, so I'm hoping that will happen sooner than later. I actually had a question regarding traffic management, through your worship to staff. What I note in the area in particular, as it builds out, that there are challenges with respect to the movement of some of these larger vehicles. So I'm assuming the trucks are 53 feet long, and that oftentimes, when I go down there, I see that there are, there are access issues to a variety of properties where we have the trucks sort of informally parked, more or less in the middle of the street, where the lanes are designed for turning in either direction. So I'm wondering, you know, what we could do to consider traffic management in that area as we continue to build out?
Mr. Richardson, any comments on that?
Thank you, worship. Through to Counsel Arneson. As indicated on the site plan, the northernly side access was secured by a previous development with an access easement to an adjacent property. That property is currently term restricted by a delta island with a right-in, right-out movement. The southern access proposed on the site, as indicated on the slide with the cursor, would be a full movement access. All those movements are designed to accommodate a design-length vehicle, as you've described in terms of the length. Upon further detailed review, staff may request a further detailed traffic study if that's warranted.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
I had the same concerns, because that little triangle, right-in, right-out, of course, nobody does do right-in, right-out there. It is a real tough area to get in and out of, and it's mostly because of the gas station and the, the foe place, which has got great foe, and Ofa, and, and McDonald's, of course. So it's, it's probably not fair to put that on these folks, but is there a way that that laneway could be improved? And is there any plan for any traffic light? Because getting onto Gloucester Way is a real challenge, and as Counsel Arneson says, the trucks are, I pulled out and got behind the truck, waiting for him to go somewhere, and I realized he wasn't in the truck, he was in the restaurant. Anyhow, it's a challenge, so what, what possibly could be happening as a result of this?
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, worship, to Counsel Long. As previously noted, it being a plan amendment and a rezoning, staff will propose or will undertake a detailed review with the proponents qualified professional, along with staff, as to any necessary improvements to the Gloucester Way itself, the proposed delta island to further turn restricted, that's deemed necessary, as well as the movements, the full turning movements.
Okay, well, that's comforting to know. And the other thing would be the, the road treatment. Because there's so many trucks, there's pothole, it's a real tough laneway there, sometimes big, deep potholes. So that's, that's good to hear, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question on F2. And it carries unanimously. And ask Counsel Ferguson to come back in. All right, move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading, and there'll be one, H2 will be for third and final, but we'll start with H1. H1 is rezoning application number 100513 and development permit application 100974 is interior developments, West End Limited, 7507200 Street, bylaw number 5427. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Ferguson, seconder. Have a second. Counsel Kuntz, discussion on H1. Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to H2, and this will be for third and final reading. Tandem parking, bylaw number 5442. Could I have a motion, please?
I'd like to move that we increase it.
I need a motion on this one. Counsel Long moves, moves it?
I'll move to 65%.
Counsel Long moves it, Counsel Davis seconds it?
No, no, no.
I know, just the recommendation's been moved.
You're just kind of ignoring him, right?
The recommendation's been moved, as it says here, and are you seconding it?
Bring it on the table, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's on, the second, move it, Counsel Long second by Counsel Davis. Any discussion? Any discussion?
No, no, I'm not moving.
Oh, sorry.
I wanted to move it at a different number, but he didn't entertain that. He wouldn't second.
Okay, so, let's have a motion first, we can make amendments if we need to. I need a mover on H2. Council Kuntz, second, by Council Davis. Thank you. So, now it's on the table. If Council Long wishes to make any amendments...
Well, I would like to amend the...
Do you want to push your button, please?
Well, I've said, I've made...
Hang on, let me get this going. Okay, Council Long.
I've maintained all along that I didn't agree with reducing the amount. I think there are some examples of successful tandem parking. It's a choice. We have to provide housing choices in the township, so if you don't want to have tandem parking in your, as your residents, then don't buy one. The issue of people storing things in their garages is just as prevalent with double-side-by-side garages as it is tandem garages. So, there, I think you have to have stratas that will enforce the bylaws and restrictions as to what can be done with the parking spaces. So, I don't, I know it's not going to go far, worship, but I don't think that reducing it to 50% is a good idea. Maybe 75 or 65, but...
Do you want to make an amendment?
I'll try, 65%.
Move the wording, 50%? We'll go through this. Is there a seconder to that amendment?
I'll second it for discussion.
Oh, what's the point?
Okay. Okay, we want to discuss it then, 67, 65%. Council Richter?
I think 50% is way too much, and I'm certainly not going to support 65%.
Thank you. Council Arneson? Oops, I cleared the queue by accident. Let me get you back on. Council Arneson, there you go.
Thank you, worship. I really appreciate the discussion, and this has been a lot of back and forth trying to figure out what the magic number is. And actually, over the course of this, I've changed my mind about what I've considered. So, I just don't want to speak in favor of raising it, and in fact, looking into this a little bit further, I tried to find the right balance of interests, and the affordability component was brought up a lot, as to whether or not it was of great value to the actual reduction of the property if there was tandem parking there. And in fact, there is no way that we can ensure that that property or residence is going to have a reduced price. That is not something we have any jurisdiction over. And so, to me, one of the compelling arguments is, okay, well, if that's off the table, what else have we got? And so, what else we've got is that oftentimes, unfortunately, we have a lot of traffic that moves off from that site onto adjacent streets, causing more problems for people. And so, I think on balance, this pushing off of the cars for a variety of reasons onto local streets is not good public policy, so I'm not going to be supporting this.
Thank you. Council Ferguson?
Well, yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I know that, I'll speak now, probably I'll speak again the next time, but I know there's probably not much appetite for tandem parking on this council. The challenge is, when we went through this bylaw, is the fact that there was much discussion of whether there should be any tandem parking in the community, which I think is wrong. I think we, I have, I won't say the word happy medium, because I don't think we meet, reached the happy medium. The bylaw is proceeding accordingly, but it'd be interesting to see what the final vote would be after we've dispensed with business. You know, and again, the question about affordability, well, affordability is also based on square footage, and usually, square footage of homes with a single tandem parking is less square footage of one with a double lot or double garage or a larger unit, and that's what it's based upon. So, I think that it serves a purpose for those that wish to build. It's an opportunity, and it can indeed, in some cases, be less expensive than larger units with a double parking and double garages and things like that. So, you know, I don't know what, you know, I can support this, but I know that it's not going to go forward, and I doubt if the 50%, but I'll wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, no, I thought the new process was to let it hear from all the speakers prior to entertaining amendments. I mean, that's why I'm not hitting the button as quickly as Council Long. You know, I think that obviously, increasing it doesn't make any sense. The idea was to bring it down from 100% or no restrictions to providing some restrictions. You know, dealing with this over a number of years, trying to get a reasonable reform of the administration bylaw to provide some political certainty to developers in the community, what's the goal here? 50% doesn't achieve that, and 60, what is it, 65%, whatever it is, certainly doesn't achieve that either. It's a meaningless reform, because, you know, we're not seeing people proposing that percentage. So, you know, I just voted in favor of a development that had 32% tandem parking, and I debated long and hard whether to do that, but that person spent a year and a half or two years working on a proposal based on the existing administration bylaw. And here we are, we finally have a chance to amend the administration bylaw and remove political uncertainty for proponents going forward. And 65% doesn't achieve that, neither does 50%. So, in this, I'll wait to speak to the main motion on 50%, but I certainly don't support increasing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question on H2 amendment. Amendment fails with Council Richter, Council Kuntz, Council Woodward, Council Arneson, Council Davis opposed, so we're back to the main motion. Council Arneson on the main motion?
No.
Okay. Council Long on the main motion?
Well, we talk about sustainability, we talk about affordability, so I don't think limiting the housing choices in the township accomplishes that, so I can't support the reduction to 50%.
Thank you.
That was known before we even started.
Council Woodward?
Yes, so thanks. So, we limit the housing choices in every single day. That's right in the land use plan of every single neighborhood plan. You know, we limit what you can do on a piece of land, whether it's single-family or townhouse for high-rise, and we limit housing choice all the time. And so, to, we need to set a policy of limiting the appropriate housing choice within each development. Specifically with tandem parking, if you read a little bit about it and research it and understand the development process, what happens is parking defines what a development looks like and what character it has. In the case of tandem, we have a situation where I believe that what happens is the development doesn't have enough functional parking, and you end up pushing those vehicles into the visitor stalls and onto the street. And in the case of Willoughby, we're not allowing a lot of on-street parking in the case of the major roads. So, where do these cars go? They end up all over the place, in the way, and they don't function. And so, for example, the development coming up after this one, the hair proposal has 20% tandem parking, which to me is a, probably a more reasonable number, and they actually note in their amendment that a lot of the tandem units are three-bedroom units. So, how is this more affordable? How is a tandem unit more affordable when it's three bedrooms? And they're specifically staggering them to achieve three-bedroom units. So, then you have a three-bedroom unit with basically one functional parking stall. And the main issue with tandem, of course, is they don't work for families where you have a car seat in a vehicle, and you're not going to be taking whatever vehicles at the front of the garage. You're going to be, you're going to be trying to get into the car that's specific to the trip. And it's not a single person or a young family without children yet that is going to purchase a three-bedroom unit. So, we have basically developers using tandem to get the density onto the site, get a smaller unit for a higher per-square-foot return, and externalize and push the parking onto other people's property, the street or the township, or just nowhere to put these vehicles. So, imagine if we built out all of Willoughby at 50% tandem parking, and that's what this reform allows. I don't think anybody would suggest that that's a good idea. So, I was trying to, at the first and second reading, propose an amendment that would remove the political uncertainty going forward, try to build some consensus, I don't know if it's 15 or 20 or 25, but try to build some kind of consensus where we just accept that that's the threshold, if you want to do 20 or 25, do it, and we won't have to talk about this every time somebody comes forward with 30% or 40%. 50% doesn't solve the political uncertainty around this, in my opinion. It would be very difficult to support the proposals at 49 or 45% knowing the problems that they cause. So, why, why put that in the administration bylaw? So, I will wait for others to speak if there are others, but I wanted to propose something around 20% or even 25, to try to have some flexibility, but set an amount that's acceptable going forward and remove the political uncertainty from this. So, I would like to consider a proposed verbally, but not as official motion right now, a more reasonable, meaningful reform rather than 50%, which is completely meaningless, because no one's proposing 50%. If we get 30 or 40, still creates these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Mayor. If I may, through the chair of staff, I'm looking, if I may, at your report, and I think it's on page four, for H2, page four, for council to review. It's, they looked at Surrey, Surrey Coquitlam, Maple Ridge, Abbotsford, Richmond, Delta, and Burnaby, and I think that only on less than 50%, according here, it looks like Coquitlam, if you take out the mold, Burnaby. I was just wondering, how many, if you may or may not have to staff, how many people are applying for over 50, or how many people have ever asked for 100% of tandem parking?
Through your worship, I've been with the township for eight years. I can't think of any townhouse application that has applied for 100% tandem parking uses. In terms of the applications that we currently have, under application are sitting at third reading, there is only one that's been sitting at third reading for some number of years that is over 50%.
So, when I hear the term "political solution," I don't, I'm not sure if that's a planning tool, but I know that when we look and use, you know, information from other governments, and we look and see what works best, and we consider, I guess, folks, those folk that developed the UDI and other things, I think it's important to note that people can build good developments, people can provide good services, and people can get good results and good end results from tandem parking. So, you know, I don't think asking every single developer to provide 50% is the answer, but providing good quality zoning with options certainly is something that can attract a multi-use of affordability units throughout the community. I'm going to support this 50%. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Long?
I think there's a fallacious theory behind this fact that only those with tandem parking are going to keep stuff in their garage, because what you're describing, which I think is inaccurate, is this, is that people are putting stuff in their garages, and it doesn't matter what kind of garage they have. So, if they're pushing people onto the street, it's because they're storing stuff in their garage instead of their vehicles. And I don't think that changing the tandem parking rule is going to address that. What you're doing with changing the rule is you're changing the choices of houses. And I'm sure there is one in Aldergrove that is all tandem parking, but I still think the problem is going to exist. All you've done now is increased the amount of land that you're putting a house on, because that's the way it works with garages with side-by-side. But I bet you if you took a survey of the side-by-side garages, just as many of them are using it for storage as they would in tandem, so that's the way I look at it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Council Woodward?
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd like to move a motion that we reduce it to, from 50%, and I'll try an achievable reform, and even that might be stretched, but down to 25% maximum per townhouse development. It's not per townhouse development, but the way it's worded, maximum of 25% of the units be tandem parking units. Let's move that.
Second by Council Richter, so I'll open up the amendment. Discussion, just push your button again. Council Woodward?
Yeah, so again, I think it's not about, you know, trying to remove flexibility, or, you know, Surrey's at 50%, Coquitlam's at 33. I mean, they, the staff, you know, spent, gave us some benchmarks and chose seven municipalities. Well, it's not all of them, so it's not a useful tool to compare what other municipalities might be doing, and it might be different type of development occurring in these other municipalities. So, for us, I just, it's a very simple question. Do we want all of Willoughby built out at 50% tandem? To me, the answer to that question is a clear no. So, we should be trying to find a number that's more realistic to the type of development that we want, knowing that we don't allow a lot of street parking in Willoughby. And we don't necessarily have a high demand or a high requirement for a lot of visitor parking, which is instantly consumed by some of these tandem units, at least anecdotally. A lot of complaining about some of these parking issues in Willoughby, and I believe a big contributor to that is the tandem parking units. So, I, that's the rationale for it. Try to find a number that makes sense in terms of building out a proper reform of the administration bylaw. And the political certainty question is a reality. So, there might be some councillors that won't support tandem parking over a certain threshold, even though it's allowed in the administration bylaw. So, why not find a number, build, try to build some consensus around a number that we can all support and accept, so that we're not rejecting developments based upon tandem parking, even though it's allowed in the administration bylaw, which is what's been happening last term. Try to solve the problem and address it going forward, so that there's political certainty for people trying to invest here, that where most of the council is going to accept a reasonable number around 20 to 25 if they move forward, and they don't have to try to guess how to get to five votes based upon what quantity of us will support what percentage of tandem parking. I think it's reasonable to try to propose a proper reform to allow people to have certainty moving forward with their applications. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment to make it 25%? All right, Council Ferguson?
Oh, I only just wanted to provide just a brief academic answer. Our neighboring communities are Abbotsford, Maple Ridge, and Surrey, just for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the amendment to H2. And two, four, two, four. Amendment fails on a tie vote. Council Ferguson, Council Kuntz, Mayor Froze, Council Long, so we're back to the main motion, and, okay, hang on, it's not working here. It hasn't been amended. So, do you wish to speak? I don't know how many times I've spoken on this, but I'm going to find you a button. There you go. Go ahead.
I'm not going to speak again. I think I've made my position clear and the rationale for it clear, but given that it has just failed on a tie vote, I'd like to make another motion that we refer this to the next council meeting, when Council Whitmarsh can be present to have a proper vote on that, on that amendment proposed.
Is there a seconder? Council Arneson seconds the referral to March 11th. Discussion on that. Call the question. Carries with Council Ferguson, Council Long opposed. Move on to H3. Rezoning application number 100506 and development permit application number 100949, Hair Builders Group Frame Townhomes Limited, bylaw number 5422. And could I have a motion, please? Move it, Council Kuntz, and a seconder? Need a seconder? Not all ones. Council Ferguson. Excellent. Council Richter?
Yeah, I'm pleased that the developer has made some changes to the facades of these buildings, so they look a little more, well, not quite as stark as the original application that came through, but I continue to be concerned about the trees. And of the 42 significant trees on the site, 40 of the trees were deemed by the proponents' arborist as unsuitable and defined as "a tree in very poor condition that is not deemed, that is deemed not viable for retention in active land use areas due to pre-existing advanced health decline or significant structural defects." Of the two remaining trees on the site, one has been defined as marginal. Now, I don't understand if you've got 42 trees on a site, how only one is eligible to be retained on the basis of healthy trees. Like, I just, I question what, what some of these arborist reports are telling us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on H3? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries, Council Richter, Council Arneson opposed. And we want to the mayor and council report. See who's left? I'll see, someone's leaving. Soon as I get to the best part. Good evening, everyone, and welcome here. There's a few events to tell you about, which took place over the last couple of weeks. On Tuesday, February 19th, was the monthly Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce Dinner Meeting, where the keynote speaker was Shane Ramsey, CEO of BC Housing. He discussed the housing hub, a new division, a new division within BC Housing that was looking to develop innovative and non-traditional partnerships across the province to increase the supply of affordable housing for middle-income households. Metro Vancouver Council of Councils Meeting was held on Saturday, February 23rd. It was great to see so many newly-elected members of all the councils throughout, councils throughout Metro Vancouver attend. The morning meeting included an overview of the region, specific to planning, air quality, climate change, regional parks, housing, and utility services, including the most important one, zero waste, of which I'm the chair. Just like to throw that out there. Of course, Mayor Richard Stewart from Porcoquitlam had to get up just before mine, and he talked about his committee, and then said after him, it was all garbage. Then I got up and spoke. We had a good time, and it was, I think, valuable information. On Saturday, February 23rd, it was also the coldest night of the year, a walk hosted by the Salvation Army, and they raised $29,000. So, I attended and just said a few words and sent them on their way, and then I went to the annual Township of Langley Firefighters Appreciation Dinner, which was held at the George Preston Recreation Centre. A number of our firefighters were honored, and congratulations go to Chief Stephen Gamble, who was recognized for 40 years of service. And I know there was other firefighters there that were recognized for 40 years, and I think even 45 years of service, but Chief Gamble's here, so congratulations, chief. And today was the annual cupcake day, which raised money for the Langley Animal Protection Society. And I went down there and had a delicious cupcake and saw six brand-new puppies who've all found homes, along with the other dogs. Now, they're roaring around, chewing my feet. Now, they're roaring around, chewing my feet. Other members of council were also busy. On Wednesday, February 20th, councillor Kuntz attended a UDI luncheon of how global cities tackle affordability and what we need to do. On Thursday, February 21st, she also attended Small Business B.C. Awards. On Saturday, February 23rd, councillor Woodward attended the Big City—the Big Deal Charity Gala for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And so thank you very much for council—for members of council for doing those things. And if there's any other member of council that would like to say anything, just don't push your button. Councillor Kuntz?
Yes, thank you. I also attended the—there was a delegation here a few weeks ago about a forum for rent banks. So I attended that. It was a whole day, ended at about 2:30. So there's a lot of information about how other communities are using rent banks to attempt to help people in crisis. So there's a lot more information about that. But that afternoon, the provincial budget came out with $10 million for rent banks as it is a tool in the poverty reduction strategy that—so I'm hoping to actually explore how we can do that in our communities, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I'll move on. Councillor Ferguson?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to do two things. One, to Metro Vancouver, and also I—it was attended at the Coldest Night of the Year as well with you, Ms. Mayor. And, you know, it was well-attended, and Salvation Army, and their gateway hope, their resources are certainly put to the max, because more and more challenges with the homeless people certainly were all looking to help in that area. And I know that there's a great need, and certainly those listening or those in the audience would certainly know, anything they could do to help certainly would be appreciated. On Metro Vancouver, I was attended the board meeting, as you know, on February 22nd, and I was appointed, as you know, Mr. Mayor, with your help, your vote, to the Ketsi Table Treaty Talks. And I'll be going there tomorrow and representing the region. And this is not necessarily a Langley appointment, this appointment through Metro Vancouver. And I'll be there to represent the wishes of Metro Vancouver in the treaty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, there's nothing else. Move on to other business. Is there any other business? One thing I'd like to put on the table, a notice of motion, is for council to refer the issues regarding cannabis retail and issues facing the production of cannabis and ALR to a CPC meeting. I'll just do that as a notice of motion for now. And councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. Through the items distributed to council, I would like to refer item number three on the distribution list to the Agricultural and Economic Enhancement Advisory Committee for review and a report back. The request is for a B.C.-wide audit on mushroom and compost facilities, and I thought it would be helpful to get the feedback from our advisory committee.
So just to be clear, just to—you want staff to provide a memo on that? I think what counts.
I was wanting to send it to the committee for their review.
Okay. So need a referral motion to the committee. So you make—so you're moving a referral?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by councillor Ferguson. And so I'll just call a question on that.
Okay, thank you.
So we have that as a record. What's the—what do I label this as, Ms. Bauer?